This time I'll call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlton City Commission which is duly posted to order and call upon Representative Basmar to lead us in the invitation.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, Amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, like King and come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. And the first thing we're going to do is, we have a couple of things that we're getting at, item one, is a special recognition. Officer Miller here, Steve Miller, if I can have him stand forward, please. Don't you up here and stand on this side. So, this is a really great opportunity to recognize one of the Harlton PD's finest and to recognize him for saving a life when he was off duty. I think many of you read about this incident out on South Mider Island, a restaurant where a young man was choking and nobody else had been successful with the hyaline maneuver. Fortunately Officer Stephen Miller was there to lend a hand and take over to rescue this young man, not for quick thinking and in the action of Steve Miller. I'm sure that the outcome of his persistence resulted in great results in that family. So we want to recognize him. Certificate of recognition presented to Stephen Miller, Harlton firefighter for saving the young man's life by performing a lifesaving hyaline procedure. Your rapid response to this situation is a true symbol of your devotion and dedication of a fire service professional and inspiration to others. We are very proud of your service to our community and for the work you do. Thank you very much. You don't have to, if you can, if you like. I want to say thank you to the City of Harlton, thank you to the City Commission and Mayor for being with us. And, uh, can I have a question?
Can we have a picture with the family?
Kristin.
Do you want to have your family up here too? She, she, you want to get it? You want to get it?
Yes.
Well, see, you always think your dad was a hero, right? Because now you know for sure he is. Next person, Matthew Sinigant, Mr. Sinigant here. So, we've got an item two, which is the presentation of proclamations. And the first one that we have is a proclamation for Constitutional Week. And so, we have some folks, if you'd like, that City Whirling and I don't see Baby Morris, but she's on the list. She's here, come on up, come on up here. To present a proclamation for Constitutional Week and the Daughters of the American Revolution. Daughters of the American Revolution. Always remind us of Constitutional Week. And it's very fitting that this week we're recognizing and remembering the United States Constitution, because there's a lot of talk about the Constitution in Washington DC this week. But we want to present this to remind us of all the importance and significance of this great document. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government, the republic, dedicated to the rule of law. And whereas September 17, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Commission. And whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which were commemorated. Whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of public proclamations each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through 23rd as Constitutional Week. Now therefore, act responsibly, Mayor of the City of Harlton. To hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through September 23rd as Constitutional Week in the City of Harlton and ask of our citizens to reaffirm the ideals and frameworks the Constitution had in 1787, visionally protected and freedoms guaranteed to us. I want to thank you all and your organizations for always coming forward to remind us of the importance of this. All right. She is the Public Information Officer of the City Park.
I think you could come.
And so, Connie Salas and Senator Sutcliffe will come forward and present another proclamation that is dating National Hispanic Heritage Month and Mexican Independence Week in the City Park. Well, everybody knows we have our SSAS celebration coming up a week from Saturday. That will be at the Harlton Minutes Log Point. We want to invite everybody to come out to that. There's always a great event down. We have, uh, let's get the Leguas.
Mariachi Cephallegoas.
Mariachi Cephallegoas, which is a fantastic mariachi group. And the Glorifanas, uh, political dancers who will perform. It's a fun evening and it's free, so we want to encourage everybody to come out. But in conjunction with that, we want to recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Harlton. And so, the City of Harlton celebrates National Hispanic Heritage Month. And this year, friends of Mexico and all Mexicans around the world, commemorate the 208th anniversary of Mexico's independence. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Week was first established by Congress and proclaimed by President Lyndon Baines Johnson in 1968, was later expanded to one month from September 15th to October 15th in the year by Congress and President Ronald Reagan in 1980. Whereas September 15th, 1810, Mexican Americans responded to the call for independence by Father Miguel Hidalgo de Rosia, whose love and power of which we continue to celebrate today. Whereas today, many in our communities can trace their Mexican and American heritage back to generations, while others have more recently come to pursue the hope of the American dream. And whereas each year at these times, we honor the rich heritage of the Hispanic community and celebrate its countless achievements. Whereas Mexicans and Mexican Americans living in Harlton represent the spirit of hard work and commitment to build a better life for themselves and their children for a better future. And whereas these contributions from Harlton's Mexican-American community encompass the arts, business, many professions, governmental and community leadership, thus enriching our lives culturally and economically. And whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize our neighboring country of Mexico's independence and the strong cultural and economic ties between our two great nations. Now therefore, I, Chris Poswell, Mayor of the City of Harlton, hereby proclaim the month of September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month and the week of September 10th through September 16th, 2018, as Mexican Independence Week in Harlton, Texas. I urge all our citizens of Harlton and residents of Cameron County to unite and celebrate this great day. Congratulations. Thank you for helping us remember this. Next item is, I have three, approval of the minutes of special meeting, July 30th, 2018, and the regular meeting of August 1st, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I move that we approve both sets of minutes.
Second?
Motion second to approve as presented, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The next item is going to be the consent agenda and it'll be just items, I'm just calling items 4B through 4H, not 4A. 4B through 4H is our motion to approve consent agenda items 4B through 4H.
So move it, second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. And we're going to present item 4A later in time.
We can talk about it right now, Mayor, if you get online. We had some comments made regarding item 4A and I wanted to go ahead and give this opportunity, Commissioner Yohorn, to indicate what those, some concerns were with respect to the ordinance and the amendments.
I was just concerned in my packet, I didn't get it. It talks about by establishing street parking requirements and for community residential facility halfway house, residential reentry center and soverlending facility. And it talks about that those off-street parking requirements would be in another ordinance. And so I asked what those were because I was concerned that the off-street parking requirements might be such that it would prevent, that would be the mechanism that prevented any of these facilities from locating in our town. And so, I asked the staff if they would look at that again.
And the item, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
What?
The item before, our planning zoning commission last week, right?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. And the way the ordinance is being presented, it requires establishments to provide one parking space per bedroom plus a parking space for the number, the highest number of employees.
Right.
And that could potentially be pretty restrictive in a residential neighborhood in some of these homes. So, Louie and I talked and gave talk and we thought if we could amend that to include a parking space per bedroom plus one, because they also have on-street parking that's available to anyone. And so we would propose that amendment to what's been approved by the P and Z.
The parking hasn't been a problem to date, right? With any existing facility in the city?
Not that we're aware of.
Not for saying else.
Okay, so, let me make sure. So, we're saying that, for example, if they're going to use a home, they have to be able to park four vehicles, three bedroom home, so they're going to have to have the four parking spaces on the property, not including the on-street parking.
To include the on-street parking. All inclusive. All inclusive.
To include on-street parking.
Okay, but all inclusive would mean I can go up and down the entire block both sides?
Well, that's what it would limit.
The street is available. It's a public right of way.
Streets are always available. I just want to make sure that.
We have situations like in my house, when I had three kids in high school that were driving, or college, I had two cars, my wife and my car, and three more cars. And so that happens a lot as people's kids get older or stay back home. And so I didn't want to be more restrictive on these places than we were on a regular home.
And the dark process behind this is that in many of these assisted living homes, there not going to be a lot of folks that are driving, right?
Correct.
The whole purpose of the assisted living portion. And so the need for a parking space per bedroom, I think would probably suffice.
Correct.
So we thought, instead of doing the parking space per bedroom plus the number of employees, it would just be the parking space per bedroom plus one, inclusive of the on-street, off-street parking.
Inclusive of the off-street parking.
And so we would propose that amendment and if something changes and we have to revisit this, we can always bring it back.
So, you know, I want to make sure I have it clear in my head. So, the only, the only part that would not be eligible is if the house was located on a street that had no parking at all. Because, I mean, to me, it's kind of crazy to say.
We have parking, now you do have some streets that have no parking zones along the street in front of a school. A good example is Harlton's in the south.
Correct.
The Midland Drive, there's no parking right across the street. That, of course, would be, would require the parking space per bedroom and the other parking space would have to be somewhere within the property.
They'd still require an SUP, so that would, that's what I'm going to make sure.
It doesn't make sense, to me, it doesn't make sense to say, three bedroom plus one four, because we're going to include the on-street parking anyway. And so it just, you know, I'm just, to me, it doesn't make any sense to say that unless you're going to say that there should be at least.
They can shorten it.
A driveway that allows two vehicles.
At the stance right now, the way it's being presented, it's one parking space per bedroom plus a number of employees. So you have three employees, that's three, that's six parking spaces. In a residential neighborhood, that's going to be challenging.
So, we're not anticipating a big influx in residences. Most of the requests that we've gotten, inquiries only, have been, they're looking in general retail areas, they're looking for something bigger because they want to accommodate. So, at the same time that we don't want to disqualify somebody for this, we also want to be able to govern this a little bit. And as Commissioner Yohorn mentioned, every single one of them has to go through an SUP. And we could review and ask and modify and change.
I agree with you. We don't, I don't want things so restrictive, but at the same time, it just doesn't, maybe I'm just being argumentative today or something, but it just doesn't make sense to say you have to park four parking spaces. But you can include all the parking up and down the street in the neighborhood.
Is there some, an alternative that you would like?
No, no, I just, I just, to me, it just doesn't make sense to have language like that when it is available parking on the street.
It is available parking.
Right. That's it. I agree with Commissioner Yohorn.
If it is, as the way we're proposing it, if it is restricted, we will bring it back and we'll try to ease it off a little bit. What we're trying to do is ease on it a little bit right now, and if we have to do more, then we can always bring it back.
Well, I do remember the first package you gave us when we talked about this originally had those, that language in it anyway. It just wasn't in the, but it originally had all the, all the parking issues in it.
And just, just another note, if, if the change is made, it has to be four fifths because it's already been approved by P and Z and we're at the second. The motion has to support it.
All right, well then, is there a motion to adopt item 4A from the consent agenda with the change that was described as one parking space per bedroom plus an additional space?
So move it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries.
One of the, at the risk of missing anything else, one of the other items on the consent agenda was the SUP for the school to have the portable buildings at, I forget which element.
Conal.
We already acted on that.
Okay. Anyway, we're going to review that in a year.
We passed, we do, we both, not quick enough.
But thanks for coming, Oscar.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item five, which is the consideration of possible action. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to back up and go item 18, take that out of order. Item 18, consideration of possible action to approve resolution, revising the base rates charged by South Texas Emergency Care Foundation for ambulance services and the scheduled and face charges set out in any existing contract for services. Okay?
Mayor, members of the commission, South Texas Emergency Care Foundation has completed their budget. As a result, they would like to come and have a rate increase approved by City Commission for $80, going from $715 to $795. In order for that rate to take effect inside the City of Harlton, the City Commission must approve that rate. So, Randy Quinington, Bill Aston, Dr. Klein are here from the, from the board. I don't believe any other members are here.
Does anybody have any questions about this? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. I thank you all for the great service that you provide to our community. It's really a sense of pride that we have South Texas Emergency Care Foundation here in Harlton. Now we'll go to item five, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution accepting Valley International Airport adopted budget for this year 2018, 19.
That's four? I'm here to discuss the budget for the airport. So the, we're going to start with the 2018 adopted budget of $6,376. And for 2019, we're going to increase it by $116,000 to bring it to close to $6,505,000. I have listed on the list of items in order of magnitude, first one is airline contracts and landing, it's up about $46,000. The next one is the restaurant. We have a new concessionaire, they're called Tailwind. They started in December of 2017, so there's an annualized impact. It's about $20,000. Next one is parking. We continue to get increases in our parking revenue, it's about $20,000. Ground handling services, we're handling, ground handling for an airline, Sun Country, plus all of the charters, it's about $16,000. As far as rental cars, they're up about 15, so that brings your total to $116,000. Is there any questions on revenue increases? Okay, we'll go to the next one. Next one is the expenses. And on the expenses, we start with the 2018 adopted budget of $6,190,000. And we're going to increase expenses by $123,000 to bring a proposed expense to, of $6.3 million. The biggest item of increases is salaries, wages, overtime, plus a pension, funding for the pension. It's about $127,000 in total. The bulk of this is the pension. Professional fees are up about $47,000. We do have an advocate and we hired him in March. And so this is an annualized impact and it represents about $40,000 of the 47 in total. Plus next year, we plan on using a company called Kirsch, can't remember the rest of the names, but they're a legal firm and they're going to handle the airline contracts for us because our airline contracts are expiring at the end of next year. The next one is the firefighters, about $27,000. Insurance is up about 24. We do have a new, our facility, so it's a new building, plus we have a test cell, plus there's just general increases, so it's about $24,000. As far as fuel, it's up about $16,000, but we do have a couple of positives. One of them being the shuttle, the SPI shuttle, that we do not operate anymore. So we're going to save about $99,000 there. And utilities, we did an LED lighting project at the airport, this is an annualized effect and it's going to save us about $22,000. So, that's the bulk of the changes for, to bring up $123,000. Any questions on expenses? Okay, the next slide. This is the net income. The net income, this year we anticipate being at about $186,000. We're going to add the revenue adjustments of $116,000 that we discussed earlier. And then we're going to take off the expense adjustments of $123,000, so we're going to bring in the proposed income of about $179,000. So it's going to approximate this year. Any questions? Okay, the next one is the capital. And on the capital, the first, first section represents local capital purchases, it's going to be about $151,000. There's a couple of major items there, one being a backhoe with an enclosed cab, that's about $85,000 of that total. And the other one is a pickup truck of $25,000. The rest is miscellaneous items that are required. The next section is capital improvements. Capital improvements are $1,250,000, of which 90% of that is funded by the FAA, so it's $1,125,000 of that is funded. Our portion is $125,000. If you look at the items, the first item is called Terminal Replace Flat Roof, that's $600,000 and that'll, the next item is, the next three items together combined are extending the runway. This is just the first portion of funding that we're requesting, and that's about $600,000 as well. And the last major item is purchasing of silver, so it's personal protective equipment for the firefighters. So that's our capital. And the last one is our cash flow. And on our cash flow, we're going to start with $3.4 million or $3.5 million at the end of this year, or this fiscal year, I should say. Uses of cash is 19, or close to $20 million, of which the first four line items are $6.3 million. That comes right from the income statement. The next one is your capital purchases of $151,000 that we're going to spend money on. Capital improvements, $12.1 billion, and this is due to grants that have already been approved. One of the big items there is the concrete apron, $4.5 million, Taxiway Hotel, $4.5 million. Flooring for the airport, the Terrazzo, it's about $1,200,000. Fan coil units are $900,000. So those are the major items. The next item for uses is an insurance claim, $1 million. In the center of the airport, we have a round roof and there's an insurance claim that's out there. We had hail damage a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago. The insurance company has already paid us $1 million. The project in total is about $1,500,000. So that will be expended in January, February timeframe, so that's going to be a use of the cash that we have on hand. The next items down are sources of cash. The first four items represent revenue that the airport brings in, so it's $6.5 million. We also, the next item down is interest income on any cash that we have on hand. Next item is PFC collections, it's about $1,125,000. This year, it's approximately $1,100,000, so I'm increasing it for increased traffic or passengers for next year. The grant money that we're going to collect is a little over $10 million. And so that brings you down to a collection of $17.5 million. So that'll bring our cash down to $1,500,000 at the end of the next fiscal year. And then the next two years, it's the same process. You run through your income items, increasing for known increases, put a little bit of inflation on your expense items, plus layer in your capital. And our cash flow is, next year, at the end of next year, will, or the two years from now will increase to $1,900,000 and then the final year will be about 3/4 of a million. So that's our budget. Is there any questions?
Do you guys have any questions regarding the airport budget? A lot of great projects reflected in the, in the proposed uses of the cash flow for capital projects. The next two items deal with those.
Yes.
There are no questions since there are motions to approve the resolution accepting Valley International Airport's adopted budget. International Airport's adopted budget?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, I want to recognize Airport Chairman Julie Gazzell, who is here in the audience, I want to thank you for being here tonight, Julie, and First Brian Wren, Assistant Airport Director. All right, so the next item is item six, which is a consideration of possible action to approve, accept the anticipated Federal Aviation Administration's Airport Improvement Program Grant, three dash forty-eight dash oh one oh one dash oh six one dash twenty-eighteen, in the amount of thirteen million nine hundred one thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars for reconstruction of Northwest and Southwest Apurons, Taxway H Projects at Valley International Airport contingent upon receipt of the FAA grant. Brian?
This grant is for the reconstruction of the Taxway Hotel and the about a million square feet of apron, which will be full depth reconstruction. The FAA has already awarded the grant and informed us that they're funding the project in full, so we will be getting the full thirteen million nine oh one one eighty-seven very shortly, probably tomorrow or Friday it should be here. This is what funds our capital improvement projects. Do you have any questions?
I would say that somebody should make a motion as quickly as they can.
Because they're waiting on this motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve and accept the anticipated Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program Grant, three dash forty-eight dash oh one oh one dash oh six two dash twenty-eighteen, in the amount of seven million seven hundred thousand dollars for the reconstruction of Northwest and Southwest Apurons and Taxway H Projects at Valley International Airport contingent upon receipt of the FAA grant. Brian?
And this is grant number sixty-two, which deals with the exact same project, so if there is, if the project's scope grows in size as we break ground, this grant will cover any additional expenses that occur. So like I said, they're willing to fund the whole thing and to finish it if need be, and that's what this grant's for, to cover any.
The one you're already working on.
That is correct.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you, and congratulations to Valley International Airport for securing that grant funding for those projects, and so a lot of improvements being made in our airport. Item eight, it's a consideration of possible action to approve that highest bids received on the following property struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale conducted on July third, twenty eighteen. And those are items A through E, first one is lot ten, block seven, Frederick subdivision, second B is thirty-five feet by fifty feet, containing point oh four oh two acres more or less out of block seven, block one oh five, original townsite. Item C is a portion of lot seven, new in addition to the city of Harlingen, Cameron County, and item D, the south one half of lot twelve, block one twenty-three, original townsite of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas. Mr. Gavada, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Yes, what you have before you are four properties that were put up for sale after we took judgment. They didn't get any bids, so they were struck off to the county and the taxing entities as trustees for each other. We wait for a sufficient inventory to build up before we take them for resale. We usually have at least one resale per year, that's in November. When we have a second one, it is in July. And these four, we put up for resale, and we, the opening bid on those is the same amount that was, that was the opening bid for the first sale, which is the same amount as what you're owed. If we don't get a bid at that resale, from that opening bid, what you're owed, then we accept offers from the floor, and we accept those offers contingent on each entity approving their proportionate share. And that's what you have here, the four that we're bringing to you are less than, actually, three of them are less than what you were, what you're owed, the fourth one, you're getting everything and a little bit more. But we put it on here just so that you knew that that's what we, that we took the four. Basically, what you're getting is about thirty-one cents on the dollar on these properties, they're, they've owed taxes for as long as ten years. Some of them had structures that were dilapidated, that were removed, you know, by the city on different projects that you all conducted over the years, so the taxes have built up on these, and so we've taken a judgment on them, put them for sale, and now we've put them on the shelf at least twice, and so this is what we have. By getting these back, by approving the bids received, you get them back on the roll, and they start producing income for the city once again. That's a, that's a report, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Does anybody have any questions for John?
Motion to approve.
Motion second.
Second.
This is the, this is the motion to approve the highest bids. Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. And then item nine, it's a consideration of possible action to approve the resolution accepting the highest bids received on a tax resale conducted on July third, twenty eighteen, for the above described properties. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions accepting the highest bids?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the motion carries. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for getting the property back on the page, Charles. Item ten is consideration of possible action to approve a proposal from Scout Mason Honadel, who will fund and construct improvements in Pendleton Park as part of his Eagle Scout project to include constructing a resource board. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, City Commission, I have Mr. Honadel here in the audience, and so he did a presentation to the park advisory board back in August twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, and so the board made recommendation to present it to the City Commission for approval or for consideration, and so he has a presentation, I'll turn it over to him right now, so he can show you all what his proposal consists of.
So this is my Eagle Scout project, it's a resource board, specifically a grief resource board for the city of Harlingen, showing what the city of Harlingen has to offer in terms of emotional resources and grief resources, which is an underrepresented problem in a lot of communities, so I figured the city of Harlingen might be able to benefit from something like that. So this is my mission, it's just, I just went over this, but this is the resource board that I want to create, it wants to be able to help those who are dealing with grief and emotional issues, and present the resources required, such as pamphlets, numbers, and other things like that, so that they'd be able to take them and use them, rather than not have the resources that they need to be able to help themselves. Impact of the project, so that is the location of the project, it's going in between two trees near the Veterans Memorial that we have in Pendleton Park. It will not be removing any of the trees, and it also will not be damaging the drainage ditch that is directly behind it, so we don't have any problems with drainage. I won't be damaging any of the ecosystems that are there, I don't want to mess with anything like that, we don't want to have to relocate anything. For the next slide, these are some of the dimensional drawings, I do have copies of these, if you'd like to take a look at them, but just in general, there's the roof, the trust system, how it's going to be oriented in relation to the trees, how are we attaching the signboard, and how the resources will be oriented onto the board, also how the roof will be attached to the posts, which will be secured in the ground, and the crushed granite which will go around the board. It's going to be mirroring the Meg Jordan Trail Sign, which has already been constructed, it's gonna be in a similar style, so that it fits in with other park boards. Are there any questions about anything on this slide? Okay. Here are some of the resources on the board, we have the Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention Program, they work with having phone numbers you can call into, and just receive assistance regarding suicide and other problems like that, because we've had a lot of issues in the community regarding adolescent suicides, and those numbers have been increasing, so I would like to address that. Below that is the number and the card, which will be presented on the board, and there will also be a pamphlet taker on the back, where you can take the pamphlets and keep them for yourselves, not just have them on the board. We also have the Veterans Affairs, which is the VA, they will be present on the board with their number and resources they offer to the community, the Veteran Crisis Line, and the Children's Bereavement Center. Specifically for the Children's Bereavement Center, they've already said that they'd be willing to restock the sign if it begins running out of pamphlets to take and things like that, so the city will not have to restock the sign, it would be taken care of by another entity. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them, I have some of the resources and dimensional drawings, if you'd like to see them.
Is it two-sided? You have the display on both sides?
The display is on a single side, because the way the trail comes, it comes around, the display faces the trail, and then it's in between the two posts, and then on the reverse side, it will have the pamphlet takers, not only so that you have more space for the resources, but if you feel as like you need to take them, you can go to the reverse side, and you can take them out of the waterproof pamphlet holders.
What about lighting? Are you gonna put any yellow lighting?
I wasn't planning on putting any lighting, I didn't feel like people would be walking around during the darker times, primarily because that would be during the nighttime, but if I do have the ability to, I will try and put in something that can provide light. But I do not currently have anything written.
The trail is lit, I just, I don't know how close one of the existing is to that, it's probably fairly well lit, though.
I currently don't have any written plans for lighting of the sign.
Very good project.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for Mason?
When's your expected date?
So, once I have the project approved, I have to go past my scoutmaster, have him approve it, then the unit committee board for the Boy Scouts, which they will approve it, that should be about maybe two to three weeks, depending on how long it takes for a unit committee board to approve, and then from there, I can go through the project, and that should probably be about two days on a weekend, if we're lucky, in no inclement weather, maybe two weeks to construct, the full digging the post holes, pouring the concrete, putting the sign in, and then from there, the project is complete, and I just have to go through the Boy Scout project approval boards, but from there, the project is complete, so probably about three, two to, two to three months, and it should be completed.
The material, are you getting it donated?
Yes, I'm having roofing donated from a roofing company, I'm going to present the idea to Lowe's, Home Depot, Matt's Building Supply, and from there, I'm also receiving donations in cash from Boy Scouts and such. Great. Are there any other questions?
Okay, so this is another great Eagle project that is, that the city is being the beneficiary of, and I want to commend Mason for the work that he's done on it, as many of you know that are involved in scouting, the scout has to plan the project, and organize the project, get the approvals to the project, raise the money for the project, and then get, and give leadership to about twenty other volunteers or so to get out there and actually build the project and get it completed, so it is a real test of his leadership and skill and organizational abilities, and a really great opportunity to partner with the city to do something good for our community, so we want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the proposal?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries, thank you. Item eleven is the consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading adopting the city of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2018-19.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, after a summer of budget workshops and budget meetings and also public hearings, we are ready to bring the ordinance to you for our final budget presentation. Our total revenues are seventy-four million six thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Our expenditures are seventy-six million seven hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. This includes all our funds, with the exception of the Harlingen Downtown Fund, the Development Corporation, Harlingen Community Improvement, and the Harlingen Community Development Block Credit, those are in separate resolutions. I'll answer any questions you might have. Oh, and a reminder, this does have to be voted on record vote.
Okay, we have the caption, so we read the caption.
An ordinance adopting the revenue and expenditure budget for the city of Harlingen, Texas for the fiscal year October first, twenty eighteen, through September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of seventy-four million six thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars, and seventy-six million seven hundred and sixteen one hundred and thirty-three dollars respectively, providing for publication of the cash in this ordinance and ordating other matters related to the program.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Second.
This is by record votes of the district.
Aye.
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 All right, the motion carries, and that's approved. Item twelve, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading by record vote, adopting the twenty eighteen adware and tax rate for maintenance and operations for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen.
As with the budget, we've held required public hearings and are ready to present the final budget, what is budgeted for tax rate. Now, this is presented in two forms, we, the proposal, as we know, is point five eight eight two seven, but it's broken down into maintenance and operations, which is point four six oh eight two seven, and this is the first part of the tax ordinance.
The city attorney, please read the caption.
An ordinance fixing the adware and tax rate for maintenance and operations for the city of Harlingen, Texas for the calendar year of twenty eighteen at point four six zero eight two seven for one hundred dollars valuation, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the program.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and so this will also, record votes will begin with Mr. Cleveland.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for record vote, adopting the twenty eighteen adware and tax rate for the interest and sinking fund for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen.
This, excuse me, this is the second part, and it's point one two eight.
Okay, we got a city attorney, please read the caption.
An ordinance fixing the adware and tax rate for interest and sinking payments for the city of Harlingen, Texas for the calendar year of twenty eighteen at point one two eight per one hundred dollars valuation, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the program.
Second.
Second, and we'll start with Mr. Cleveland.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, so on first reading, we have our budget passed, and both of our, in our, in our tax rate ordinance is passed, we're glad to present a good, solid budget that is fiscally responsible, along with no increase to the tax rate again this year, so congratulations.
Great.
One more, one more reading. Item fifteen, and thank you all for the fine work the staff has done to get us to this point in adopting the budget and the tax rate. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to accept grant funds in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars made payable through the office of the governor.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Consideration of possible action to approve resolution accepting the downtown improvement district budget fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen.
This is one of the funds that is not included in the budget ordinance, and this is adopted by resolution, which is the Harlingen Downtown. The revenues for this fund is two hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five, and the expenditures, two hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution accepting the downtown improvement district budget?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alpia.
Thank you.
Now, item fifteen, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city of Harlingen to accept grant funds in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars made available through the office of the governor, Homeland Security Grants Division, and the local borders and security force to our program.
Mayor, Commissioner, and City Manager, I have free money too. Requesting authorization, requesting authorization for a mayor to accept a grant, a border star grant of sixty-five thousand dollars. The Harlingen Police Department will be utilizing the local water security border star program funding for overtime cost and operating expenses to the city of Harlingen for providing additional manpower in a state-led and unified strategy to respond to the increased presence and and threat of organized crime, terrorism, and violent crimes within our borders.
All right, we're all going to keep that grant money coming, so.
Motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Next, item 16, consideration possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen to accept grant funds in the amount of $35,000 made available through the office of the governor, Homeland Security Grant Division, under the Operation Stone Garden Program.
Requesting authorization for a mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen to accept Stone Garden grant funds of $35,000. And once again, the Harlingen Police Department will be utilizing the Operation Stone Garden Program funding for overtime cost and operating expenses to the City of Harlingen for providing additional manpower in a state-led and unified strategy to respond to the increased presence and threat of organized crime, terrorism, and violent crimes within our borders.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you very much for presenting those items, hearing those grants for our community. Item 17, presentation discussion regarding adoption of an ordinance related to City of Harlingen, section 46.3, regulating use of handheld wireless communication device while driving a motor vehicle. Ordinance number 11-51. By repealing and replacing said section, amending the Harlingen Code Ordinance's provisions relating to handheld wireless communication devices by repealing and replacing current section, providing for publication and ordaining other matters. This is just a presentation discussion, right?
That is correct, just for discussion.
Okay.
All right, so last year, the state of Texas passed a law that made it an offense for anybody to read, write, or send a text message, but it never actually addressed the issue of utilizing a phone. So what we want to do is address that issue in addition to other things that the state was allowing, such as utilizing a GPS equipment and also activating your phone just to be searching for music. So before we get, jump into the hands ordinance, I do want to say that we are in conversation with other entities. For example, our EMS partners are here as well and we're still cleaning up some of the language to make sure that we meet their needs as well. So the one thing that again didn't address was the use of the phone. So what we want to do here is explain why we want to present this. Now, we're all into safety. We want to make sure we improve the safety of Harlingen. What you see right here is a proposed sign that we do want to place throughout the City of Harlingen if the ordinance is adopted. The only thing that we're missing in this sign that by state law, we do have to provide the fine, which we'll also read that it'll be up to a $200 fine. So the proposed ordinance will prohibit the use of engaging in a call, send, read, write, or text message within accordance with state law, and engage in any other use of the device unless it is done hands-free, and that's the magic word, while operating a motor vehicle within the city limits of Harlingen. So once again, the idea is to promote the safety of our community and decrease the possibility of distracted driving while refocusing drivers on the task of driving to preserve the safety and welfare of our citizens and our visitors as well. So permissible use of handheld communication devices, this is what it is allowed. Basically, in a nutshell, if someone has an emergency, they are allowed to activate that phone to make that emergency call. Also, other exemptions would be if somebody has a job that requires that they utilize that equipment, they are allowed to do so, and especially first responders as well. In addition to that, also on private property, of course. Other permissible uses, once again, that is affixed to the vehicle and used as a global positioning or navigation system. Right now, the state law allows for someone to activate that phone and use their GPS. What we are saying is you can still do that as long as that equipment, that phone, is affixed to the vehicle in some form or fashion. When the operator is authorized and authorized emergency personnel in their official capacity or when the operator is licensed by the Federal Communications Commission. All right, so what we are proposing does not conflict with state law, okay? It also does not violate any other sections such as minors who are not supposed to activate anything at all while they're operating a motor vehicle, okay? Now, if this ordinance is adopted, what we want to do is have at least a three-month educational process where if we do see a violation, a warning citation will be issued. In addition to that, we are going to depend heavily on our media outlets to get the message out there. Now, this is not a moving violation, so this will not become a part of a person's driving record, all right? Doesn't add points to that record. This map right here shows the proposed locations where we want to place those signs. Those are 13 signs throughout the City of Harlingen and if we start at the very top of the map, such as right here, when entering the city traveling southbound on Expressway 77 or Business 77. Moving counterclockwise right here when entering the city from Wilson Road, traveling eastbound. Down here, you will see Business Expressway 83 and Business 83 as well. Down here at the bottom, we'll place a sign if traveling northbound on Rangerville Road or northbound on Ned Carey as well. Down to the right, once again, traveling this time now, northbound on Expressway 77 and also northbound on Business 77. And on the right side, if one is traveling westbound on Harrison and Grimes, they will also see a sign posted there. And in addition to that, arriving at the Harlingen Airport. We want everybody who's coming to our city via an airplane to be aware of the city ordinance. And the last location will be traveling southbound on 507, okay? At this time, I would like to present some of my staff, Commander Cabasos and Officer Maldonado, who worked really hard at getting this project started, and we are prepared to answer any questions.
Have you thought about doing anything with the school district as far as with high schools or any kind of, I guess, passing out pamphlets or information stuff?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, sir. I have a team of highway enforcement officers and right now, they're doing that plus something else. So right now, they are engaged or in conversation where they visit our driving schools here in the City of Harlingen. So they have a section where they will show up and talk about distracted driving. Through the schools, we also have partnerships. We use the school resource officers or we show up and make presentations as well. Yes, sir.
Can I, if the passenger, this doesn't affect the passenger, it's only the driver, right?
Correct.
Okay, so the driver can have either earplugs or earplugs or the wireless.
The Bluetooth. Yes, sir, that's correct.
And that'll be fine.
That is correct.
And or they can have a cell phone on the windshield with a little arm that you can suction properly.
And that is only if you need to navigate.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the exception. That's correct.
But you did mention if they have a job, whether it's, if it's for their workplace?
Correct. If the job requires that we send communication with headquarters or corporate office and they have to be having that conversation, they're exempt.
And does that include people like a plumber that's receiving directions from his dispatch?
That is correct. As long as it's job-related, yes, sir.
So what is the state law? If you could start at the beginning again, please.
Okay, the state law allows for someone, okay, let me start with the prevention. The state law prevents someone from writing, reading, or sending a text message. It still allows, for example, if right now, if I'm driving and I want to order pizza, I can take on my phone, enter seven digits while driving to place that order, and it's okay for me to do that, and it's allowable by state law. Okay, it also allows if I want to drive home and listen to music while I'm driving, I can activate my phone and shuffle through my music to find that song or station through my phone.
So if one has a newer car with a Bluetooth device and one could coordinate their phone and listen that way?
That is correct.
Well, one can, under this proposed, one cannot play a book on tape or a music and have it sit in their lap or on the pass, the empty passenger chair, is that correct?
No, you can do that before placing the vehicle in motion. So, and that's the word. As long as the vehicle's in motion, we are expected to have both hands on the wheel. So if I want to activate my phone in the parking lot and say, I want to listen to this radio station and then drive, I'm okay. But halfway through my driving, I lose connection or I want to pick another song, I can't touch that phone again.
Okay, and how would a police officer determine if the person says, well, I was in the store and I plugged this in and now seven minutes later, you catch me listening to something to my device? How's an officer to determine whether that device was turned on in transit or in a parking lot or on a private property before moving?
We won't. That is the difficult part of this process enforcing it. Now, what we would do is this, if we see somebody, because the proposed ordinance requires that one not be handling the phone, so the mere act of holding on to the phone violates the city ordinance. So whether that person was texting, listening to music, that really becomes irrelevant as, because they are already violating the city ordinance. Does that make sense?
Just for holding on to the phone.
Correct.
This is what will get you in trouble. May I ask the question, is this enforceable also with EPS? Will they be also enforcing the city ordinance or they don't?
Now, since we are in the process of updating our city ordinance, we can add a line where it says it can be enforceable not only by our city officers but other state officers as well. If we wish to do that.
I'm going to play real devil's advocate here. Okay, so my job is I offer technical support via telephone. That is my job. So that means how do I prove to you that I'm conducting my job and I'm driving the vehicle on Bluetooth? My phone is affixed to the car. I say dial a number and it dials a number. An incoming call, I say answer. It answers the call. I'm doing it all 100% hands-free. Correct, hands-free. I'm doing it all through, in fact, I can say text, give the name, read the text and it texts it and it reads me back a text. What's the difference now? I know that it's distracted driving, I understand where, but where do you make the definition that a person's job is part of that?
Well, the example you provided is hands-free, so you are within city ordinance.
I am within city ordinance.
Correct. As long as it's hands-free.
The way I read this, it says zero operation of the mobile device in the vehicle. It does not say.
Unless employing said device in a hands-free mode.
Oh, I didn't see that. Where is that?
It's at the bottom of number five, yeah, into the paragraph. It says Roman numeral, small roman numeral seven.
I don't have a Roman numeral seven. Okay.
Page two of three at the bottom, last paragraph. Page two of three. Unless employing said device in a hands-free mode of operation. I mean, I think everybody's aware that the problem comes when you have to look at the screen and do something.
Nice.
You know?
Texting.
To me, that's much more dangerous than someone driving intoxicated or anything else because you're actually taking your eyes off the road, which is what the purpose of this is, is to stop us all from taking our eyes off the road.
Right, and see, where my problem is, is that they're going to allow us to use a navigation device built into the car.
Not built, it has to be affixed.
Well, according to this, it said something about a navigation device.
Correct.
That came pre-installed. How did I read that?
Either or.
Maybe I misread that.
You're being very modest.
No.
So if you like, if you're a taxi driver.
But you don't have to touch the screen.
Right. Well, but if you're a taxi driver or an Uber driver and you have the phone, it said that.
That, you're fine.
That stand that's attached to the dashboard, that's okay.
That is okay, yes, sir.
Okay, as long as it's out of your hands, it's just in a, you can see it. All right, is there some, is there a particular issue or problem that we're having out there on the streets? Is there some common thing that is going on that we can't?
Well, two things.
We can't make a, we can't issue a citation for because the ordinance is not written this way or?
Well, what we were trying to do is enhance or ensure the safety of all of us out on the road. I think it's safe to say that most of us here have seen somebody on the phone while they're driving and we know that it's not safe to do so.
Don't look at me.
And that was the whole intent here. Now, the reason we want to do that and be more stringent than the state law is just for that reason on its own. We can still cite for the state law, that's not a problem. What we want to do is prevent people from saying, you know, well, I was just, you know, looking for music or I was just ordering pizza, which the state allows me to do.
Ma'am, has any other city taken on this kind of task and seen results or are you trying to merit?
Well, my last research showed that there's about 90 cities in the state of Texas who have adopted some form of hands-free ordinance. I haven't read all of them, so I don't, and I don't know what the results are.
Austin is one. You don't want to be talking on your phone up to your ear in Austin.
So the, those of us who have older cars that don't have a Bluetooth capability, then that would just shut down total communication.
Well, no, no, you know, what I, what I want to say is this, the intent of the ordinance is not to prevent any of us from having that conversation in the car. You can still do that. The intent is to guide us to do it in a safer way. There's equipment out there, there's besides the Bluetooth, there's speakerphones that can be attached to the car and voice-activated systems that you can purchase and implement.
Aftermarket.
Correct, yes, sir. So there's other options available.
You said the fine was $200 and it doesn't go on your record?
Up to $200. Correct.
Not to exceed $200.
Correct.
You know, just driving today, the gal texting while she was driving on Harrison. I see people texting all the time.
Yes, sir, we do too.
And I.
You know, the odd thing is.
I understand texting. The problem with it.
When we are in uniform, as you know, people tend to drive better around us, right? But sometimes people forget that we also wear regular clothes, we go shopping, and we see what everybody else here sees as well, so we know, we know the problem. Now, up here, we have a couple of stats. I don't know if you are interested in looking at this, but the first section right there shows us what Texas has filed in between 2015 and 2018. It also shows a column of what distracted driving is and how many were injured out of those reports and how many fatalities were experienced. The bottom portion shows Harlingen.
Okay, well, is there anything that we want to have your input provide to us? This is just for discussion tonight, so I think before it's brought back for possible action, if there's more information that you want or any feedback you want to give or have the time to do.
Where the monies will go or how will they be used or are they going to be designated to create more of a prevention? Are you going to do something with those dollars or is it just going to fund or how on the off the fines?
Sir, I can check.
Will you use that same money to create, to expand that prevention or?
Let me check on that. We have to meet with court personnel. We, I don't know what happens when fines.
And if you do have another agency, how do you get a portion of the funds? You're going to have to work on that, right?
We'll check with courts, sir.
Yeah, to follow up on your re-based question, so as I understand it now, there's a traffic offense, the ticket is written, they go to court, they pay X dollars and the state takes a rather large chunk of it. Will that happen in this case?
I'm not quite sure. I'm not familiar with the processing of the citation of the courts.
I mean, is this citation for the benefit of the state or the benefit of the city's coffers?
I would check on that, sir.
Good question.
Okay. Any other questions? Mayor Whittington.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment as a representative of South Texas Emergency Care. Whenever the existing ordinance was adopted five or six years ago, it had an issue, there was an issue about the fact that it did not accept or exempt emergency vehicles like ambulances and the supervisors' vehicles. And y'all agreed to incorporate into the existing ordinance a paragraph which exempts the EMS providers. And we've discussed this with Deputy Chief Anderson. There are two or three places in the proposed ordinance that are near misses, it looks like, to exempt EMS providers. And what we would ask you to consider whenever you do consider. And what we would ask you to consider, whenever you do consider adoption of the ordinance is including a paragraph similar to the one that's in the existing ordinance that exempts EMS providers and EMS vehicles from this. Ordinarily, our drivers would not be using a cellphone or something like that. If they are, or if they need to, it's because there's something really bad going on in the back, and the call can't be made by the person in the back. And so, it's really important that they be, have the ability to do that without violating the ordinance. Thank you.
All right, somebody else have any other questions, or Marion, or Deputy Chris Gonzalez?
Good evening. Just playing devil's advocate, as, you know, we all do want safety in distracted driving is an issue. At the chamber, we represent the business community, but there's also certain aspects that, you know, as a whole, we have to ask questions and stuff in instances like this. Determining who's using the phone for business, it will become an issue. And as it is policing, this will become a burden to both the city, the police officers, and the community. The only other thing on that is you're putting the burden on the citizen. I think people will take some effect to it that just holding the phone in your hand is an act of itself a crime, or not a crime, but a ticket, a ticket offense. Understanding it can be distracted, but if you're just holding the phone, in and of itself, should you be ticketed? You know, in argument's sake, if you have a cup of coffee in your hand, you know, where do we start drawing the lines? I've read the ordinance, and just again, just playing devil's advocate, on behalf of the business community and the community as a whole, who gets to determine if it is a valuable business proposal? If, you know, you're doing business, is your business more valuable than mine? But, because of why? And just again, just playing devil's advocate on this, that we would like this answered and discussed before anything is further taken down. Thank you.
I mean, it boils down to sort of a judgment call, like, what's reckless driving? So, when you see somebody move the phone from their console to the seat to make it further away from them, that's not an offense, but when you see them changing something, I mean, that's, that's, that's what you're looking for, is their attention shifted to that device and taking it away from the road, and they're touching it with their hand, obviously where a policeman could see it.
Been behind for two blocks.
I was gonna say, you know, I'm on the road a lot, and I notice a lot of people doing activities that have nothing to do with phones, but they, they do not have their eyes in the road. They're trimming their beard, putting on their makeup.
You can see the texter, I mean, I've seen them in an 18-wheeler where they're bumping that white line?
Oh, yes.
Every, you know, 100 yards, and you're like, "Really?" It's, they're pretty easy to spot. I think we could all spot them as well as a police officer.
Well, you know, it's good to be first in a lot of things, and in some things, it's not so good to be first. So, we need to probably, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions about this and a lot of concern, I think, about it, while we, I think everybody appreciates and understands the general, the general nature of the problem. I also see some difficulty with enforceability of some of this, because it's gonna be real hard, because I don't think really the ordinance is intended to exempt Commissioner Liao from talking to his clients. I think it's really intended to exempt taxi, certain classes of operators that have a central station or something like that. I'm not sure, but anyway, I would like to know more about other communities that have done this, what the ordinance looks like?
Yes, sir.
Before we talk about it again, their ordinances look like.
Okay.
But those are certainly impressive, you know, reductions in, since the enactment of the, of the no texting.
Well, that 2018, we're not through yet.
Yeah, that just...
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a real positive. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thanks, sir.
We'll move on to the next item, which we've already taken care of, and then, out of 19 is a consideration, possible action to approve a resolution to appoint a member to the appraisal district board that expires December 30th, 2018.
Mayor, Commissioner David O'Dwyer is the, our appointee, the commission appointee to the appraisal district board. His term expires on December 31st, 2018, so we'd like to both appoint another member, or I believe he's willing to serve, to continue serving, my understanding, so it's up to the commission.
I noticed he's currently the secretary of that board, so evidently, he's working his way through the leadership. He's been there about six years now.
Is there, is there a limit on the terms, Commissioner?
From what I understand, no.
No, I believe so. And so, we thought we'd do this with plenty of time, in case the gentleman wanted to select someone else. It is not my recommendation at all. It is up to the, the commission.
So, we have someone that's willing to serve and is active serving on the board, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd make the...
So, you guys think you have a thankless job?
I second that.
Well, he explains to me, it has nothing to do with the taxation, it has to do with the business side of that office, so he doesn't get involved.
He's not on the appraisal review board.
No, he's, he's, it's the management of that business.
All right, we have a motion to the second mayor. Okay, motion, second to reappoint David O'Dwyer. Any other discussion? Almost a favor say aye. I suppose, like, sign. Thank David for his commitment and serving as a representative on the board. We're gonna pass item 20, and the staff says they're not quite ready on that one, and we'll go to item 21, which is consideration, possible action to approve a resolution establishing an air service development program and authorizing the city manager to execute agreements meeting eligibility criteria.
Mayor, Commissioner, if you recall, at the last meeting, we talked about the developing an air service development program, and we have been working with our airport legal counsel, hired by the airport, our legal team, to develop the terms for a development, a air service development program. And I'm gonna run through those fairly quickly, you have them in a packet. I've also included in your packet a draft agreement that we would utilize. Again, this would be tweaked depending on the air service, and also, the application's also in your packet. So, what we're proposing is to create a minimum revenue guarantee program to, for air service development. This is for new entrants coming into the market, providing non-stop service to Chicago, Las Vegas, San Antonio, Denver, and DFW. The city would set aside an incentive fund of a million dollars, this would be a shared fund of a million dollars, that would be available for new entrance carriers that would meet the criteria. The city would have the right to increase that million dollars at our sole discretion. Again, the fund, the second line, the available fund, the fund is a million dollars, and these funds are not derived from any airport funding source at all. This is strictly general fund money that will be used for this incentive program. The eligibility criteria, the new entrants will be proposing service non-stop again to Chicago, Las Vegas, San Antonio, Denver, or DFW, not all, any one of those, no later than April 1st, and not less than once weekly. There is an application that must be filed that'll stipulate what services they're gonna be providing that would meet these, this criteria. Now, the incentive period would be from December 1st, 2018, through November 30th, 2019, or until the funds are depleted, whichever comes first. And why December through November? Because we're gonna, these, incentives are gonna be paid out quarterly, first quarter starting in December, so forth, so on. The qualifying segment, the carrier would have to submit the schedule of flights that would qualify. Those would have to be verified, our own legal team, management, we would look at those and make sure that everything's okay. And again, the form of incentive, it would be subsidized for new entrance carriers over. I keep saying it over and over, because I want to make sure everybody understand, it is for new entrance carriers only. Up to the million dollars during the incentive period, it will require a plane, a, I don't know what this plane looks like, that Ryan's here, A320 or B737, but it is a 108-seat aircraft.
180.
180, I'm sorry, 180-seat aircraft. And the incentive would be $15.26 per seat for each qualifying segment. The airline would have to submit documentation on a quarterly basis. Our finance department would review it, make sure everything is in order before we would submit our payment of the incentive. Any defaults, if there's an issue, the carrier maintaining the schedule of flights, we're also looking for them to be, to maintain an on-time performance of at least 80% or better. In the event there is a default or the carrier pulls out, the city reserves the right to terminate eligibility, and we also reserve the right to request reimbursement for early termination. All right? And this is supported through any FAA rules or regulations. I will say also that this morning, the airport board approved their abatement program. It's a sister agreement program. They adopted an air service development program also that abates certain fees for new, for new and incumbent carriers. Again, ours is for new carriers only. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this program, and the staff is recommending approval. Our airport is an integral part of our economy, and to growth of our airport is something that benefits all of us. So, we're certainly asking for your approval.
Under default and remedies? So, we're talking about, they have to qualify for the December, through November, is that what we're talking about? There's, they can't just qualify for one quarter, they have to qualify for the full month.
A carrier would have 30 days from announcing service to submit an application, and they could, they could actually literally start services next month. Now, the quarter is starts, the first quarter will begin in December, so they would submit their documentation for the quarter ending in December for reimbursement.
But, may I, the schedule of flights for the full incentive period, that's when it qualifies? They can't just qualify for one quarter, they have to qualify for all four?
The full incentive period.
Full incentive period, okay. So, this can't be a seasonal carrier?
No.
That's where, that's where I'm going with this.
Now, I, now, I say that, but, you know, some use the term seasonal differently than others, so we have to be cautious in saying, it's not seasonal, because some airlines use seasonal to define their services in new markets. But this is, this is a great program. The attorneys and Allison helped a lot in putting this together. There's a lot of thought that went into it. We've been working on this now for probably four weeks, three weeks, four weeks, and I think we're pretty happy with the end result. Now, it also allows, requires, well, actually recommends, that the city manager be authorized to execute the agreements once, if they meet all the criteria, and again, there'll be some checks and balances in place before I sign off on anything. And the purpose of that is, if we do have a carrier that comes in and applies next week or the week after, we don't want to hold that up, we want to move that forward.
I have a motion approved. Have we a motion approved? Second. Any other discussion? This meets all the FAA criteria for equal access and limits basically the amount of money that we're gonna put into the program. So, almost a favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. All right, very good. And Julie, thank you. Thank you for being here at this time. Thank you. All right, next item is 22, board appointments. Are there any board appointments?
None.
I want to reappoint Homer Ramon to the conference, Tony Butler and Michelle Lopez to the convention.
Yes.
You, convention.
CBV board.
CBV.
Okay.
None.
All right, is there a motion to approve board appointments?
Some.
Almost a favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, like, sign. Motion carries. All right, item 23, is the executive closed session pursuant to section 5.1.071, to City Government Code, to consult with the city attorney in connection with the NPO merger. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So, move. Take.
Almost a favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're, we're gonna go consult with our attorney regarding this matter, and there will be no action, so we'll come in. All right, so we're, we're out of executive session at 7:22. There is, no one signed up for this communication, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.